Kathy, I don't see a mic, but should I use that one?
Yeah, sorry. It's been a few months, I'm a little rusty, I guess.
I just got your note about November.
First meeting of the school year. Student of the Month.
Yeah.
That's good. So it makes me feel my summer's. You have Miguel or Alex here? How about Ina Seropoulos?
Make it through the hazards of wires. That's your first test.
Look out that way. How are you tonight?
Good.
Good. You must be Ina. And what school do you go to?
Ross.
What grade are you in?
First.
What's your favorite thing to do when you're not in school?
I don't really know.
Because there's so many fun things? Well, here's what your teachers have to say about you. Ina is lovely, organized, and follows through on her commitments and is a very positive role model for everyone in our community. That's great, Ina. That means that all your classmates look up to you to show them what to do. So congratulations on being student of the month. And here's your certificate. All right.
Watch the wires.
How you doing, Corbin? You want to stand here and kind of speak into the mic so everybody can hear you?
No.
No? I'm going to stay right here. All right. So Corbin, what school do you go to?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, all right. And do you enjoy that?
Yeah.
What do you do when you're not in school?
Well, lots of fun things.
Awesome.
My brother's sick.
Your brother's sick? I'm sorry to hear that. Otherwise, he'd be here with you, huh? I bet so. Well, here's what your teachers in kindergarten have to say about you. Corbin is doing a great job in kindergarten, helping his friends solve problems and articulating his thoughts and ideas. Corbin wants to be a good friend and help make our community inclusive and safe. He often wears his superhero cape and says he is solving problems at recess with the big kids. All right.
You know, there's a mean team at school. I always am working on stuff.
Yeah? You're working on stuff?
I'm working on stopping the mean team at school.
Stopping the mean team?
Yeah.
By showing them how to be nice?
Well, actually, um, we're down after a minute, I've got a secret hideout.
A secret hideout, all right. Good job, Corbin. Give me five. All right. Here's your certificate.
Watch the wires.
How about Delilah? Hi, Delilah, how are you tonight?
Good.
And what school do you go to?
Same as Corbin.
And what grade? Kindergarten, awesome. That's the best grade, really. And what do you like to do when you're not in school?
I usually like to play or color.
Yeah? Should you do some river trips this summer?
Um, yes.
I bet. I figured so. All right. Well, here's what your teachers have to say about you. Delilah is doing a great job in kindergarten, making new friends, including everyone, and positively engaging in the community. Delilah is confident and kind and enjoys doing many activities, always trying her best. Delilah has helped many of her friends when they are sad or hurt by giving them a hug. Nice job. Congratulations, Delilah. Okay. If you head out to the lobby, Will will take a picture and you'll probably be in the soaker sun. All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Thank you. And send me the name of the person that wasn't present. I will. Awesome. All right. We've got everybody here. It being 6:04, we will bring the meeting to order. Kathy, would you do roll call, please?
Luis Iones, Heather Henry, Ben Baumfach.
Here.
Lonnie Kitching.
Here.
Dan Richardson.
Here.
Erica Sparhawk.
Here.
Marty Silverstein.
Okay. Item number two is the consent agenda. We have the accounts payable, item A. Item B is trustee minutes from September 18th. Trustee minute, C is trustee minutes from September 25th. D is a liquor license renewal for Silo. E is a liquor license renewal for Mings. F is Thompson Park Development Agreement, Amendment, and Eighth Amendment to the Annexation Agreement. And item G is the right-of-way lease, 310 North 8th Street. And Kathy sent out revised minutes for September 20th, excuse me, for September 18th. So if the motion could include those revised minutes, that would be appreciated. Does anything, anybody have questions or want anything taken off?
Only just clarifying, it's pretty clear in there, but just to kind of state it publicly, on the right-of-way lease, that if we decided to do some work along 8th Street, we could revoke that lease with a 30-day notification. So there's no long-term commitment whatsoever. And they're not putting in a new fence or a new structure, it's just the existing. Okay. It just seems to be on our, you know, public improvement plan at some point to work on 8th Street, and I'm sure we're going to need every inch of right-of-way that we can get out there.
This is an existing condition, correct?
Yes. Yeah. I just want to make it totally clear that we're not doing anything else. And then Janet, with the Thompson, that's just, this is just formalizing all the things that we agreed to.
Yes.
When we discussed, I mean, I read through it and everything, but, you know, little details can get missed, so, okay. Those are my only questions.
Any other things?
I don't have anything.
I'd move to approve the consent agenda with reflecting the revised minutes for September 18th. Is that right? As submitted by the town court?
I'll second.
Motion by Ben, seconded by Lonnie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Good. Got some unanimous votes tonight. Otherwise, we're not doing much. All right. Item number three, persons present not on the agenda. So is anyone who would like to address the board on something that's not on the agenda? No? Okay. See none, we will move on to trustee comments. Anybody have anything?
No.
I just have a real quick, just from Third Street Center, update. The big thing going on there is a boiler replacement. So that's a costly endeavor, but much needed. The building's operating without heat right now.
Without any?
Without any heat right now. So I can say we're all walking around with our sweaters on and space heaters are coming out, so.
And that's the boiler that the Federal Mental Lease District grants in for, too, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. So it's a long story, if anybody wants to know, but it was an unfortunate, you know, problem with the boiler. It's actually not that old of a boiler, but there were maintenance issues and the company that they got the boiler from no longer services it, so there's no parts for it or anything. So, yeah.
Frustrating.
Yeah. It's very frustrating, but.
Okay.
So that's the focus of.
A lot to the story, actually.
There is a whole lot to the story. I won't take up all trustee comments, though. But if anybody wants to know in the public, we're happy to share. Or if anybody wants to donate, the tops of the class at the Third Street Center will also accept donations.
I can relate. Our boiler's out at our building, too, so. Chili, chilly days.
All right, that's all.
Ben, you have anything?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I have a handful of things. Thanks to staff for the town picnic two weeks ago. That was great. And appreciated the invite, and lots of trustees attended as well, so just thank you. It's really well done and really yummy food. A week and a half ago, I went on a tour of the Wolf Creek Storage Facility with Black Hills Energy. They're planning to make some upgrades to their natural gas storage facility up Four Mile. So they were just sort of explaining what's going to happen, and it'll be a big project that'll start next spring and go through the fall, and I'm happy to answer questions of what I know. But they'll have probably vehicles and equipment coming through town, and they won't be expanding any footprint of their storage up there, but they'll be making improvements to what's there already. So I'm happy to answer questions. I attended a dinner at Bear Ranch hosted by the American Rivers, and it was quite an amazing and inspiring event, as if we hadn't put enough attention on rivers this summer. It was a good way to end it. Former Governor Romer was there, and Representative Rankin, and Russ George, and, like I said, it was an inspiring event. And talking to some folks in town, it just seems like Carbondale's certainly in a great position to make some of the improvements, some of which we've already started on, to be more efficient with how we use water. So folks were grateful and looking forward to progress in the future. Congratulations to KDK on their fund drive. Last week, Lonnie and I also attended the State Economic Development's Meeting on Regional Priorities, so it was kind of a follow-up on a meeting from May where the state was really just asking our region, what are your priorities for economic development? And, you know, we also had an event kind of tangential to that a month or two ago, talking about what Carbondale has as assets and what opportunities we could pursue. And it was really good. It was attended by the school district and CMC and other jurisdictions, and I don't know if I'd say there were any necessarily takeaways, but the state is basically saying, we would love to help you develop either a regional plan, economic development plan, or help you focus on a specific item or topic. So we'll see where that goes. I don't really have anything to ask right now, but it was good that the state's so interested in our area. Good work on First Friday. Little subdued this year or this month because of the rain, but thanks to staff, as always. Potato Day was, again, a great success. I think, I don't know if I would say, I don't know if it's fair to say staff had more involvement this year than most years, but.
Significantly more. Much different. We're all in the partnership with the Historical Society, hope this is a model which can grow on and become a fundraiser for them, but it was a much different level of town involvement than in the past.
Yeah.
So Rec Department really stood up and worked to keep that event alive.
It was great. It was, I don't know, it always gets better, but it was one of my favorite Potato Days, and thank you for trustees for helping out and serving food. I thought that was great. And Will's not in here, but thanks to all. Oh, there he is. Will, thanks to all your efforts for herding us, herding us cats.
Thanks for bringing in the trustees. Did you see the photo of you pulling stuff out of the pit?
I did, so thank you. That was my greatest honor yet, is my here. The other thing I wanted to bring up tonight was, we all received the email from Jill Share talking about the piece of artwork that she would like to essentially donate to town. By donate, she means find someone who would, I guess you'd say, sponsor that, so it would be no money to the town. She talked about putting it on a pedestal. Jay brought up a good point, that really, any piece of artwork should really be out in the lobby as opposed to these meeting rooms, because they're constantly getting changed. And while I haven't seen it, and we would need to confirm the, it's a prayer piece, so if it would be, how would you phrase it, Jay? If it would be perceived as religious, then we would need to open it up to any type of religious artwork. I don't know who would make that determination.
I know Marty told me he was researching it, so I was thinking. I mean, in all honesty, I'm not sure how that determination's made, but if we do have pieces which are of religious symbolism, we have to make it open for all elements who want to. And I'm not sure if the prayer wheel qualifies on that, so that's something we can dig into a little bit.
But I wanted to just ask the board, is anybody opposed to that idea of accepting this gift, assuming that it goes in a place that works for Town Hall? And assuming it's not religious, if it is, I suppose we need to revisit the issue, but.
I'm not opposed. I've seen it, because it's in the Third Street Center in her studio.
Okay.
And it's, I mean, and we got a photo of it, kind of, but yeah. It's like, you know, this big round, kind of tall, and the prayers are, you know, people's wishes for the town, I would say, almost more, like, there's like affordable housing on the list. Things that we talk about frequently. So it's, yeah.
Okay.
And I don't think it came from one religious, one type of religion, you know, it was more,
And it's an indoor piece?
Yes. Yeah, because it's fabric and felt, I think. I know she works with felt a lot.
Yep. She's amazing.
Yeah, it is. It's really amazing. She did the, you know, in the Third Street Center, there's the Thank You Wall, that's all the kind of felted walls. That's another one of her pieces.
And she was like, I asked Marty to check in with CPAC, and they said, hey, you know, this really is out of our, out of our realm. We don't have an opinion one way or the other, so we're not stepping on their toes. So.
It's just hard, you know, it's just a text email, like, we don't know what we're talking about, really. I have no idea what we're talking about. So I don't have any reason to say, I mean, it's like, if somebody wants to donate art to town, it seems like a great idea.
Okay.
But I would want to have some idea, like, what does that mean? Do we accept all art donations and give them a place in Town Hall?
Well, that's part of this question.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't want to blow it out of proportion either. Like, I'm inclined to just say, yeah, that's great. That sounds like a great idea, but it seems like it'd be nice to see what we're talking about and where it might go, and whether it causes any issues or something like that.
I didn't see a picture. Was there a picture?
When she sent us, she sent us an email a while back about it.
Yeah, I feel like it's been just kind of disconnected. I mean, maybe.
And then she sent, and that included a photo, I think.
Okay.
But it's right in her studio at the Third Street Center, too, for, so we could have, it'd be kind of clunky to, like, bring for us all to look at it on time.
We can certainly say we'll wait until all the trustees have a chance to look at it.
Yeah, and maybe just some word from staff on if there's a place for it, and if it could bring up any issues as far as the religious thing. It sounds like hopefully it wouldn't. But I think some places have gotten into an issue where they accept one thing, and then they have to accept, like, the local satanic cult guild wants to put their.
That was our staff discussion.
People push these issues, right? And so you just have to be kind of, or somebody wants to put something really overtly religious toward a very legitimate religion, but then suddenly are we the menagerie of religious artifacts? Like, we don't want to go there.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we say, we like the idea, we want to determine whether or not there's religious connotations? Would anyone like to look at it before we make that determination?
No, I mean, I think I conceptually understand what it is, and I believe I recall the photograph that was sent initially, and, you know, it's one of those Himalayan prayer wheels, I believe. But my minor concern, I mean, conceptually, I think it's wonderful, but then again, you know, Town Hall really is a place of business, and do we want to turn it into a tertiary art center? No. And to Ben's point, then, does that open the door for us to be obligated via precedence to have to accept other requests as well? So that would be the thing that I would prefer to look into before we accept the gift, the most generous gift, which, you know, I think is great, but again, there's some, you know, contingencies associated with that that we should probably be clear about before we install it.
Okay. So I'm not sure what research we can do, but I think what I'll say is, we'd like to, you know, we don't necessarily have a firm answer for you yet, but we're going to look at it and see if there's any kind of religious connotations, and the board will revisit it before we make a final decision. And by that time, maybe you can do whatever kind of homework you want, because I think ultimately, like you said, it's a precedence issue.
Yeah.
And I don't know if Mark would be able to give you any more feedback, maybe, on if we're.
If there's any kind of policy around that that's been set previously or not, or, yeah.
Okay. Well, so I'll follow up with Jill and figure out who would make the ultimate decision of what.
But I think it'd be nice to hear from staff on it.
Yeah.
I would like that, in a more formal way, with a little bit of the legal side, but also a little bit of the logistical side. Like, I, like I said, I don't want to blow this out of proportion, I think it's a very generous offer, but I also don't want it to become, are we then the judges of everything that gets, like, if somebody offers their art to town, do we look at it and go, oh, I like this one more than that? What are we talking about? Maybe that'll never happen again, and this is the one offer, and that's great.
So Jay, anything? So I guess the reason I skipped over that, because Jay did provide comment saying, with the caveats, that, hey, if it's religious, we need to do this, and we certainly would want it in the lobby rather than any of these rooms, but anything else to add, or do you want to look at?
We'll go take a look at the piece and come and look at locations and stuff, so.
Okay.
And Ben, I just forwarded you the email that she sent.
I found it, thank you. And what you said, it was the first one, because there were just a number that were kind of detached, it wasn't all in the same stream, so I see it.
Yeah. And it is specifically, you know, it was created with the community in mind, and it's like people's wishes for the town of Carbondale.
Yeah. Yep. And I think it, we, yeah.
Like, it says things like, more parks, clean environment, affordable housing, support economic and cultural diversity, Carbondale to be mindful of the environment, that kind of thing.
Okay. All right. Well, I will pass on this information to Jill, and we'll bring it back at a later date.
Like, it might be good to hear from her. It might really help. Like, what's her vision for this? Why is she offering it to the town? And that might just put it in a context that we can go, oh, okay, now we get it.
It's a good point.
Okay. Any other trustee comments?
No.
Mark, anything from you?
Thanks to all of you for serving at Potato Days. That's it.
All right. All right. Moving on to item number six, public hearing for the transfer of the liquor license for the Black Nugget. The applicant is Ledgerman, Inc. Location is 403 Main Street. Have a seat. Kathy, anything to introduce with this?
Taking the Black Nugget?
So Humm's mother and stepfather used to own it, and after kind of the separation and a new ownership, is now taking it over. So it's kind of staying in the family, but the big thing is, is when Vid was running it, he lived in Eagle, and he wasn't really present. And welcome one of our newest community members, because he's living here, and he's there seven days a week.
Pretty much, yeah.
He lives in the bar.
No, that, I mean, I live in the basement, but I've actually found a place which I'm moving into this week, so I'm really grateful for that. It's been kind of hard in Carbondale to find housing, you really got to jump on something quick, so, yeah, it's been a good transition. The first month, a lot of work, a lot of untrained staff. I definitely got feedback from Kathy during the application process that what kind of issues have been going on, and what the town's concerns were, and the police as well. I have the history of always wanting to communicate and work with our police department to protect all, you know, everyone in the community, and the bar, and the bartenders, and all that. Overserving was an issue. All the bartenders are now pouring with jiggers and have been pour-tested, and once they pass a pour test, then they will be able to free pour, which they'll have to do every two months. They're all tip-certified as well, so we're getting them on the right path, and I think the staff is a lot happier as well. And I think we've definitely, I've noticed a lot of good change, and definitely not as much, if any, overserving that I did see in my first weeks coming there, which was an issue that we took care of right away, so.
So the police department's recommending this be approved, but it's with working with him on the overserving issue. There were issues on a few occasions with that, and it looks like the new ownership's being proactive on dealing with it. So the police department is recommending approval and hopes the trend continues there.
I assume you're Jan?
Yes, Jan, correct.
Pronounced right now. Thank you for showing up, and it was just a little concerning to read that there was a history there. Typically, we don't necessarily have any history. So it sounds like if I read it correctly, the overserving occurred not under your watch, and now that you're here and present, you're taking the steps that you just mentioned to correct that in the future?
Yes, correct.
Do I understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So none of the overserving has happened since you've been here?
I mean, there, I wouldn't say, there was an issue of someone who fell and cut open his chin pretty bad. And from, I was actually, I got there and I saw this happen. He stood up really quickly, and he, the bike rack was just in a bad spot, so when he hit, it really sliced him open. From talking to the bartender, she said that he seemed fine when he was walking out and this and that, but I've made sure to acknowledge the fact that, you know, they need to make sure how much they're pouring them, if they do not feel uncomfortable, to cut them off, make sure if they need a ride home, or whatever the situation entails. And so really, it's just, it's taken a little bit of time to get them trained and really on the right path. They, the management that was there before wasn't able to actually train them properly and make them feel comfortable behind the bar. That's the one thing that I really noticed, is they don't feel like they're in charge, and the pressure gets on, and sometimes it's difficult when someone, you know, give me another drink or whatever, or then they get mad, and they're like, we're never coming back. So the girls didn't feel in control of the situation, and as they should be when they're working, they're in charge. So, yeah, there was a few incidences, and that really made me move a lot more prompter, take prompter actions faster, and hence why they're using the jiggers. And I've explained it, you know, with every single bartender, one-on-one, to go through that and make them feel more comfortable, which their feedback back to me is that they are, and I've seen the improvements and the results.
Jan, is there always a manager there with bartenders?
During the week, weekdays, I am there during the days. I work, the only night right now that there isn't a manager is Sunday night, and those, for the reason, it's usually Sunday nights are pretty slow, and sometimes they close early. We have door guys on Thursday nights, Friday nights, and Saturday nights, or for whatever events, if we have, like, Mountain Fair, for instance, we will do on Sunday night as well for the whole weekend, or whatever events are going on. So they do have the door guys. I'm there as well on Friday and Saturday nights as a barback slash just general managing, going around, making sure everything is okay, and helping out the door staff as well, which they appreciate, and gives them some time to get off the door, or, you know.
And what's the recourse if you catch them, or somebody, if a staff catches them, they don't get caught by the police, but you were to catch somebody overserving, what would be the recourse to the employee?
Well, they would, if they were overserving, we actually have a, they're in a probationary period right now, so to the extent of the overserving, it would probably be termination. We try and avoid that just because it's kind of hard to get staff, reliable staff, and then I would pretty much really be there every single day by myself behind the bar. So it would go to a write-up, but if it was to happen again, and it became another issue, I, there's no other choice but for termination, because, one, it's a liability for the business and all the other employees that work there, their jobs, and for the patrons as well. We need to keep them safe as well.
How many employees do you have?
Right now, we have a total of eight employees.
And they're full-time?
They are almost full-time.
Okay.
Yes.
And what would you say the average years of experience here? And what would you say the average years of experience your employees have? Or the range, I should say.
The range, I have one bartender who has about seven months' experience, and then the other bart, one other one has a year experience. So I would say anywhere, the youngest, or the smallest experience is six years. And then we have a bartender who's been bartending for four years, and then I've been around the bar industry for about 10 years.
Okay. Other questions?
I mean, mine would just be on the town's side as far as recourse. Like, if we get repeated complaints, and the police are over there a lot, and it's people are being overserved, what's our process if we approve this liquor license?
We switched our process up a few years ago. So we would call in the hearing officer. The police chief would make a determination that we would want to, you know, have a hearing to suspend or revoke their license. And right now, our hearing officer happens to be the mayor of Rifle, actually. And she's our appointed hearing officer, and we go through that process. So we do have one to deal with it. Normally, what happens is our police and the patrol men on duty, patrol men and women on duty normally directly work with the bouncer at the door, the manager on site first, and then if things aren't addressed, it goes from there. I think in talking with Gene, there's a levels of, a level of confidence at this point on some of the changes being made. But we're there fairly often. This is on our radar, and on busy nights, we'll be in and out of there checking on things.
But it's also something that the police can handle, right? It's against the law to over-serve, so they can, like even if Jan didn't take any action against an employee to the police?
We, usually we go after the liquor license. The challenge is overserving is more like a general term trend, and it's often hard to identify in terms of a police charge that this person had all the drinks, you know, in the bar. So it's normally on the trend of the organ, the entity itself is what we usually end up dealing with.
Okay, I'm trying to think if there's...
If I could add to that as well, is in, previously, I've spoke to the Carbondale police, and just to clarify how this overserving issue is, because it is kind of, every situation is a little bit differently. And we, I've had a patron come in who's known around town to take prescription pills, and she has one beer, and all of a sudden, she can barely walk and get out of there, which we took care of the situation, got her home to her husband, and that was dealt that way. We have the cameras as well, you know, to show this is how much we've, we served. And so that situation, everyone is a little bit differently, but we're working on it, and we'll make sure it's taken care of, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. So Jan, we have, we've all only been on the board for a little more than two years or less, but we have had a hearing for another establishment, so we're not shy of calling somebody back and saying, hey, we feel like there's a problem here. Black Nugget's pretty visible, being right on the corner. Again, this is pretty uncommon for us to, usually these are slam dunks, because there's squeaky clean records. So I would just encourage you, if we approve this, that just know that you're getting more attention than normal, and it doesn't benefit either one of us for you not to follow through on this. But it sounds like our police have faith in you, and that gives me faith. But just know that you gotta cross your Ts and dot your Is more carefully than ever before.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Anybody want to make a motion?
It's a public hearing.
Oh, thank you. It being a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I'll move to approve it, but do I move just to approve the liquor license or move the transfer, approve a transfer?
Transfer of the liquor license.
Okay. Do I need to say from, sorry, I lost my page?
Seventy-four. Yes. It's pretty general on there.
Oh, yeah, right there, it just says. So I move to approve the liquor license for, or the transfer of a liquor license?
Of The Black Nugget.
To The Black Nugget? From The Black Nugget to...
For The Black Nugget.
For The Black Nugget.
Second.
All right, motion by Erica, seconded by Ben. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say no. Jan, thanks for your efforts of trying to right the ship and coming down and talking to us tonight. Good luck.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you all. It's nice to meet you.
Yep, me too.
Good luck.
All right. Item number seven is also a public hearing, transfer liquor license to 450 Degree. The applicant is 450 Degree, and the location is 568 Highway 133. Welcome.
How are you?
We're doing well. Will you introduce yourself?
Yep, my name is Desi Olanda. I'm gonna be the restaurant manager. I'm here representing the owner. That's gonna be Xiao Chilin over here. We have another owner, which is Young Fuling. He's not here, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So there's really not much, Kun Yaku is wanting to sell their business, and 450 Degree is coming forward. They're doing a lot of renovations. They have a building permit. They expect to open up if you give them a transfer in about a month and a half. And then, I don't know, do you want to hear what kind of food?
Sure, you can tell us about your restaurant.
Oh, yeah. So it's gonna be a tepanyaki restaurant. So tepanyaki is basically Japanese grill. So it's, the menu includes steak and seafood. There's gonna be a little bit Chinese food too in the menu, but it's mostly gonna be tepanyaki and sushi. Yeah, so it's not gonna be too much different from the previous restaurant, which is Kun Yaku. It's just gonna be new menus, and then a little bit new interior, something like that.
All right. Have you managed a restaurant before? Do you have experience?
So I've been a server for four years. In my, the last place that I work, they didn't have any manager, so it's just only the owner and the servers. I was kind of like the head servers, so I kind of helped the owner manage the restaurant. Yeah, I was not, I was not a manager, but I was kind of like helping managing the restaurant. So I get a lot of experience from that.
Okay.
Great.
I think it's kind of like, correct me if I'm wrong, but John Plano told me this, that it's kind of where you are in a square, and they're cooking in the center. I don't want to say like a certain specific restaurant out there, but you know what I'm talking about? Where he's cutting up the steaks, is that correct?
It's kind of similar. So there's a restaurant concept that's called Hobbachi. So that one have, have a lot of individual table with chef on the center, and then customers sit around the table, and then watch the chef during the showtime. So this restaurant is not gonna be like that. Our restaurant is not big enough for that. And then to have so many Hobbachi tables require a lot of cost. So what we're gonna do with the amount of budget that we have is that we just have like an open kitchen. So the chef is still gonna be, is still gonna cook outside, so the people, the customers can still see them cooking. But it's not gonna be, they're not gonna have individual chef on their table. Yeah.
I see. Any other questions? Okay, it being a public hearing, I will open the public hearing to the public. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for a motion.
So I'd move to approve the liquor license for 450 Degrees, is that it?
Second.
Motion by Ben, seconded by Erica. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say no. Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Bringing your business to Carbondale.
Thank you.
Yeah, tell your whole team thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. We have so many restaurants.
Yeah.
I know.
Okay, we're gonna jump into the budget. I'm assuming nobody needs a break yet before we jump into the budget, so. Renee, welcome back.
Janet, you can't leave.
She's sad.
It's gonna be exciting.
She just wanted to hear about the new restaurant.
We know how that works.
Good night, Janet.
I'm hungry. Didn't eat before. I'm like... That sounds great.
Here's some shrimp.
We need one of those in here.
Renee did that on purpose so that we moved through this quickly, so there we go.
It's perfect.
Item number eight is a public hearing on the general 2019 budget presentation. So this is the official presentation of the budget. Renee, take it away.
It's my favorite time of the year when we start into this. We'll be going into it until December, when you finalize and adopt the budget for 2019. The budget is important simply because four items. It's a policy document. It permits the elected officials to express a mission, priorities, goals, and objectives. The elected officials have some discretion over the types and levels of services to be provided. The second item is, it's the financial process. It requires consideration of revenues projected over the next year and expenditures associated with completing the policy goals. It requires financial information, discussions of the expenditure plan, and revenue alternatives, prioritization of program needs, and decisions on the future direction of the government. After the budget is adopted, it becomes a guide to the operations. Hence, you get quarterly reviews of what we have actually expended compared to the budget. The budget is a communication device. We use it to explain to the citizens and the state how the goals of the government are being realized. Understanding the full range of possible revenue sources allows the government to determine its maximum physical capability and to help avoid over-reliance on one source. The government's knowledge of the entire range of revenue options will enable it to develop a balanced revenue structure. It allows studying the link to activities with revenue sources. When making budget decisions each year, the government should consider the long-range impacts. All future costs should be examined. When considering improvements, it is important to determine the ongoing operational costs and the source providing the funds for those costs. The Colorado Budget Law requires submission to the governing body, the Board of Trustees, by October 15. At that, and that, then the draft budget is made available to the public in order to encourage citizen input. The governing body must publish notice of budget upon receiving the proposed budget. So tomorrow, we will be submitting the notice of budget to the paper. The presentation of the proposed 2019 budget. How we do the budget is every year, the departments prepare baseline budgets. Then they develop budget requests for additional resources if needed. The department proposals are then reviewed and analyzed with the town manager. The information is then combined into the proposed town budget, and once balanced, presented to the town board. The budget represents the commitment to provide high-quality services and the infrastructure needs for the community in the most efficient manner. It represents efforts to maintain or increase services at financially sustainable levels. It represents the continued management of surplus and debt levels to improve long-term financial health. The board developed four priorities this year. Affordable housing was one. That is addressed in our budget with the transfer of $50,000 to the Housing Fund for 2019. Second priority was support local businesses and facilitate economic development. We have done that in this budget by the $20,000 allocated to the chamber. It was requested by the board that we put in another $25,000. And we have economic development funding with the revolving loan fund, which we spend $2,000 approximately on the administration. We have self-funded special programs for tourism, summer music, farmer's market, Oktoberfest. The third priority was waste hauling. We're doing that with the bag fund, the town cleanup, and hazardous waste day. Communication is everywhere in the budget. We try to communicate as broadly as we can. As to the budget itself, you've all got the memo on the highlights. The 2.2% in property taxes is what we're looking at next year. We predicted the excise and sales tax for marijuana to be flat, a 3% increase on the sales tax on estimated 2018. Right now, that is at 9%, so it dropped a wee bit in August. We were expecting that to drop down to 7 by the end of the year. The mineral leasing and severance tax is expected to be flat or a little bit below, and the county is continuing the road and bridge. In our expenditures, we're looking at a 5% overall salary increase. The group medical is gonna go up 4%. We have certain itemized expenditures. We're looking at a new IT contract, which you'll look at later tonight. We're looking at building operations, replacement of HVAC for one unit is approximately $12,000. Those are getting old, and we need to start replacing those. The lobby floor needs to be refinished, and we are researching LED lighting in town hall. The parks and cemeteries have additional money for Red Hill, $55,000 for sprinkler system along the Highway 133, and the White Hill Cemetery improvements. There is an error in this note under the water fund. The Nettle Creek Pipeline pump should not be $100,000, it should be $150,000. So that was a change that was made before. It's correct in your budget, line item budgets, but it was not correct in this memo. We're also in the streetscape fund, doing a placeholder for land acquisition, just in case we get an opportunity. Another error that was pointed out by Dan earlier today, thank you very much, Dan, I appreciate it, is on page 146, the streetscape fund, the projected ending fund balance is incorrect, and it should be $228,257. Anytime you see something in this budget that's incorrect, please let me know so we can correct it before you adopt it. Any questions?
Just a, actually a couple other things to fill in. We projected that 7% kind of balance the year for, for sales tax. We're up 9 at this point. We're gonna monitor that pretty closely, as we always do. But last fall was a banner time for sales tax with the bridge project. So to see what kind of adjustment we get, we saw a spike at the end of last year when, during that project. We had the same thing with lodgers tax too. So we're gonna kind of see how we compare to that. We have some new restaurants and other things going on in town, but we don't have the captive audience that we had at this time last year in town too. So that's one that was just really hard to predict. So we'll keep a, we'll keep a real careful eye on that in terms of the revenue projection side. We also didn't include in this budget some of the things which may happen on the current ballot issues. The one concerning the sales tax for transportation, we did not include, didn't make any judgments whether that had passed or not. If it did pass... If it did pass, there'd be an additional approximately $189,000 in revenue next year, which would be for street projects, which is roughly an overlay a year, basically, that we would be looking at if that actually does pass. So didn't build that in. We'll know in early November, so if it does pass, we'll be able to adjust the budget down the line. We included the standard half million dollar transfer into the capital fund. We have a, we'll see later tonight, or later in this budget process, actually, a fairly ambitious capital plan for, for next year, and that's something that we can, you know, that we can look at. And that overall budget, you know, we're roughly a little over $200,000 in reserve spending, but that's really what's going in, but that includes a half million dollar transfer going into the capital side of things. So, you know, we're, we're tight, but we're in pretty good shape. We think we have pretty good estimates on end-of-the-year expenditures, but, you know, there's little things which can change as we close out projects. For example, we're just trying to close out the project for the Thompson House and get those final numbers. We've got estimates right now, but that'll close out. And there's some other projects which we haven't finalized, the Red Hill Trails, for example. That's not actually in next year's budget, so it'll be part of the, or this year's budget, so it'll be part of the supplemental because we didn't know we would be that successful in the fundraising. That's one which is under contract, but won't start for another week out there on Red Hill. So it's still some things going in, on, on the project side, which we need to build in for the, the final. So moving target, this is kind of the first comprehensive step. And a lot of the details department-wise, we'll get in the individual department reviews. General administrative ones, you know, now's a great time to bring, bring those questions up because we don't do an administrative kind of review line by line.
And we'll also be talking about public works in detail after this, so right now it can be general budget questions. Otherwise, I thought we could kind of go down Renee's list, and anybody has questions? Ben?
Yeah, just generally, just to really, I want to be really clear on big-picture revenue and overall surplus sort of deficit fund balance. Because the past two years, we've had to go into the red, and that hasn't been nice. And so it's nice to not be doing that. But this, on page 142 of our packet, the, the first page, I think, of this, says revenues for 2018 are expected to finish the year at 12% above budgeted 2018 revenues. But I thought you just said something different, that it was at 9, and now we're going down to 7. I just wanted to make, what number?
No, he's only talking sales tax.
I was talking about bread and butter. Those other revenues would be higher. Some of them were grants we hadn't budgeted for, and then some of the other revenue sources.
Building permits.
Okay, so overall, we're expecting to, to close out this year, that we're in right now, 2018, with 12% more coming in than we had budgeted for. And does that mean that that's unspent funds that carry into the next year, or that's funds that we then have figured out through supplementals and stuff needs for this year?
It's a little both.
Okay.
Because some of those extra revenues are grants and projects that we're working on, which we hadn't included in the budget, so it'll be part of the supplemental side. And then some will end up being, growing the fund balance for next year, or basically not spending down as much as we had, as anticipated. So it, it's not a, a complete comparison, Ben, of what's actually going to the bank. It's because of some of these other projects. For example, the, the Red Hill project wasn't in the, in the budget. The maintenance so far and the trail construction's an easy one to.
So where do I look for, how much we're expecting to sort of carry forward that we weren't expecting, basically, at this point? Like, what kind of surplus are we ending up with at the end of 2018? And what are we doing with that?
If you look at one, page 145.
Yeah. Okay.
Right there is your 2018 estimated.
So we started at 5.7 million, and we're expecting to end at 5.9, so we're coming in roughly 200 over.
Roughly 164.
Okay. Oh, I see, revenue, okay, right there, got it.
And that's, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's one of the reasons why we're not pulling 500 or more, or more than the 2-something for our reserve, our capital projects. Usually, we've been pulling, late, the last few years, we've been pulling more out of reserves to fund capital. This year, we don't have to.
We don't have to. So that's, we'll, we'll carry forward 164,000, and, well, no, that's, that's even though we spent it. So then we're thinking of in 2019.
Our fund balance will start out a little bit higher.
Okay. And then, so 2019, it's saying here $215,000.
Right.
Less at the end.
We're expected to spend more than our revenue and take it out of reserves.
And why that's there is, we norm, that includes the half million dollars that we transfer into the, the capital fund, which in the past has been a bigger slice than the, you know, anticipated than the 2, 215 in previous budgets.
Mark, I had a question for you before you go.
So that's, and that'll, you know, as we go through the capital budget and look at those in details, we'll, you know, in detail, we'll see where we're at. Because we've also been, you know, we're looking at the general fund. We've also tried to build up the fund balance in the capital fund some, and we've tried to build up the fund balance in housing. So that's all, you know, money coming into the general fund and then going to these other two funds.
Right. I guess my main question is, it seems like while we've got this big increase in revenue this year that we're, that we didn't expect, I thought we would be ending with more fund balance than that. And then I thought going into next year that we're expecting another 3% growth on that, I'm surprised that it then takes us into the red next year at all. Like, it seems like we would have, it seems like we'd be having a conversation about what are we going to do with all this money, but it doesn't seem like we're having that.
We're also very conservative in what we do.
Well, in our estimates, you know, we try, you know, on the, particularly if you look at like, building fees and, you know, some of those more fee-based ones, we, we look at what major projects are there and then go, well, if 2/3 of those happen, not all of them. And so if they all hit, it can be, can be bigger.
There's some projects that we have put off budgeting for, and it's a good thing we did, as they have not materialized yet.
In terms of outside of our control. And then, and the reason why it looks a, a little tighter in the big picture, we've also looked at some other expenditures that we've been deferring over time. Some on this building, you know, investing a little more on the IT side, a higher level of adjustment on salaries. So, you know, we've already, to take the fun out of the budget process, we've already pre-spent the, you know, some of those additional revenues. That's not to mean that there's not a discussion to have on those priorities and if, you know, we have them allocated right, but that's kind of how we, we look. When, when we sit down and go department by department, you know, we take out kind of the, gee, I really want this versus what we really need to operate. And so, you know, you don't see, there's no extra new employees in this. In fact, there's an expectation that we'll, on the intern position at sometime next year, that will, that, that'll be gone in terms of having her duties fulfilled for her degree. And we don't have a proposal to backfill that at, at this point either.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Just big.
Since Mark's wanting to get out of here, I'm going to jump around for a second. So last year, I'd asked the board to put in an allowance to research the voluntary real estate transfer assessment. And mid-year, I realized that that really wasn't going anywhere. It wouldn't reap many revenue, or many rewards. But in a conversation with Representative Rankin at this dinner, I toyed around the idea of, or I, I asked him about the possibility of de-brusing the real estate transfer tax, meaning, could the state legislature give municipalities the ability to ask the voters to ask for real estate transfer tax, which is currently illegal because of Tabor? So rather than make it voluntary, could we go to the voters? And to me, that, that is the best force, source of funding for affordable housing, but we don't have the ability to do it. So I, I don't know whether or not that, I doubt that $2,500 is still in the budget, but I would like to have some sort of cushion to, to research that. If, Mark, you think you would need to do any of that, or is that all at the state level? Or does the board support that idea, or what? But Representative Rankin thought that there might be something there, so.
I mean, my understanding is that's just a state constitutional amendment.
Yeah, so basically, the voters have to then change the state constitution to make that change. And so legislators could refer that change, or it could be a ballot, you know, initiative, one of the two. But they can't pass legislation which just says, we're going to, we're going to get rid of the, we're going to allow real estate transfer.
The reason is just to retain excess revenues.
Yeah, that's not the correct term, but.
I understand, you're saying take it to the voters, but the voters locally cannot amend the state constitution, so my initial reaction, it's a really interesting idea, and I think all of us would like to get there. I'd love to be creative with you, but my initial reaction's the same as Jay's.
Yeah, I mean, I've been involved where we've researched that issue in other organizations and gone down that, that road and, or to increase an existing one, and it would take, as Ben said, it's a constitutional amendment, which would take a vote to change the state constitution. And one of the challenges is when Tabor was passed, it also limited it to single, it was of all kinds of stuff built into Tabor, but one of the toughest things is it said you can only have a single item in a title to change things. So you can't wrap changing Tabor into one big election issue. It's, each element has to be a separate election issue. It was quite ingenious, the way that was set up, but it's multiple steps, so all the different issues in there to get changed. And it's, I mean, it's worth a discussion with the state and CML if there's interest to see if the legis, it's easier to have something referred than it is to, particularly with now the petition requirements.
So I guess there's no.
But to talk in the CML and seeing if there's any critical mass to, to do something like that is definitely worth it, if that doesn't happen.
Okay. That's all I had for you, so.
And just while Mark's still here, we did increase the legal budget from 100,000 to 140. That's more a reflection that we have two separate cases, which have lower levels of insurance coverage on them, which are going through the judicial process right now. So hopefully, we don't spend those. We could, it just depends on where those go.
Hopefully, one of them is about done, but we don't know that. And it's not insured at all. The other one might be partially insured, and it's just starting, and it's not being handled by our law firm.
Yeah. Thanks, Mark.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Back to, that's it? Back to general questions on the budget or Renee's memo?
And as we go through this process, the major departments will be here to go through their budget specifically. And so keep looking at the budget, keep going through the budget, keep asking questions. This is a moving target up until we adopted the first meeting in December.
Just one big picture question, if I could. Do you see any, you know, caution flags on some of the deferred maintenance that was alluded to, that we've been kind of rolling over in order to stay within budget?
I, I think we've addressed deferred maintenance, the critical items, and now there's some items that we have an opportunity to take care of, which maybe are more cosmetic than operational. I mean, for example, Renee and I have been arguing for now seven years, six years, I guess, over refurbishing the floors out front, which were damaged during a, a special event here where things were taped down and, you know, ripped up, and you'd see there's all kinds of lines out there from tape marks on the stained concrete. I've consented that we're in a little different budget position in that we should probably fix that now. So some of that's more cosmetic stuff than deferred maintenance. I think as we get into the parks budget, particularly on restrooms and park facilities, that's where we, we have a, some pretty good deferred maintenance issues to have that discussion. There's some ongoing FMD grants to address, you know, some of the playground sides. And staff-wise, we've been trying to address what we can on basic maintenance stuff. I mean, every bathroom was painted this fall when we were in the middle of drought and didn't have to mow grass as much. We painted every restroom on the inside and, but there's some real work which needs to be done on, on some of those facilities.
Okay, thank you.
I know we talked about this before, but the Kroger's plastic bag issue, do we know, I mean, when, when Kroger decides to stop selling plastic bags, as they've committed to do, our bag fund will disappear, correct?
They don't sell plastic bags, they sell paper bags if you forget your plastic or you're reusable.
So, so our fee is, is not, so, but Kroger's going to stop using plastic bags, so will our fee apply if they take a paper bag?
Seems like it'd be up to us.
I, I believe they would still be selling paper bags for those who forget their reusable bags or don't have them. If Kroger decides that's not going to be an option and they're going to go to all reusable bags and not have that option, they don't have to provide it, then we would be out of that, that fee.
Okay.
How that plays out, I mean, we keep thinking that fee's going to drop, but it doesn't. The revenue coming off of that.
That's why you get a quarterly report that shows that graph. It has yet to go down.
But as long as they have plastic, or excuse me, some kind of bags that they're providing, we could, we're going to recoup a fee, so we don't need to worry about that going away.
I, I mean, I, I don't think so, as long as they're offering the paper bags for sale, but we need to dig in a little deeper into how that, that was, was done. And it was my understanding that was like a 2020 projection to phase out the plastic. I'm not, it seemed to be a couple years out, but.
Yeah, it's 2020.
I think it's 2020, but we'll, we'll dig into that a little more.
Well, if it's 2020, that's fine. Let's make sure. I had another question on page 152, general, general fund history, estimated, proposed. Just looking at the police budget, seemed to increase from 2016 to 2017, and again, from 2017 to 2018. Is that just, it, it seemed larger than the others, just anecdotally, but is there anything different happening in police that?
You have a number of items. You have finally some fully staffed.
Okay.
Police department. You also have a lot of training that gets done that's reimbursed by the I-70 post. So we get a revenue source to offset the expenditure that shows up here.
Okay.
Though, you know, I, I think a, a good explanation, that is, of all the departments, I mean, the town is primarily labor and people, but of the police department, they're the most labor-intensive because there's not a whole lot to the PD other than labor. The vehicles are out of the capital side, which is the major other expense on the police side. So as our labor costs go up, I think that's magnified in the police department because it's primarily labor, and we can look at that as we get into the budget detail. We've also have, our insurance, we kind of adjust what we're spending on insurance by the makeup of the department, and we have more young families, fully insuring families of, in the police department than probably the balance of the organization. So instead of, you know, one, one, one person or just a dependent, you have a full family on pretty much the entire, the vast majority of the department right now. So that, that influences it some too. And then we've also looked salary-wise, we try to keep folks, we have different hierarchies within the police department. Police officers one, police officers two, sergeants, two sergeants, a lieutenant in chief. And as that adjusts over time, that ends up impacting salaries a, a little bit too, but it's mostly more of a labor cost.
Okay.
And we've been pretty fortunate now, you know, that we haven't seen, you know, most of the turnover within the police department has been retirements and predictable, anticipated changes and not, because right now, our lieutenant is actually in a, doing an extensive training up in Denver right now, and he goes, oh my God, every department is just poaching each other's folks. There's this huge demand for police officers, and we're doing okay on that front right now.
Okay.
So I want clarifying, when, just with fund balances, so on page 146 of our packet, projected fund balance on the streetscape fund?
Yeah.
This doesn't seem quite right.
It isn't, remember? I just mentioned that Dan corrected that earlier, which I really appreciate it.
So, so the ending balance there is the 228.
The 228, 257.
Okay, got it. Sorry, I didn't realize that was the same.
That's okay.
So one of the things, in that 700,000 expenditure in streetscape is just a number there if we can make a run on property acquisition or some other improvement. We don't have a specific project planned for next a specific project planned for next year at this point, and the one project we did this year, since we self-performed a fair amount of it, we brought in significantly under what the estimated budget was, so we're, we've been kinda keeping the streetscape as our bank account for, you know, parking and stuff, and when we get under the public works discussion, you know, we've looked and have some ideas on that right-of-way parking and other parking issues, too, to discuss.
Okay. Renee, for what it's worth, probably Ben and I were looking at the Rafta budget, and if you average all the other jurisdictions, the average sales tax projection for, or budgeted increase is 2.9%, so we're, we're right there.
Right there, yeah, I do a little informal survey of, of areas, and that's why I try to keep us within the reasonableness of everybody that's going on.
Other questions on the general budget, or anything, anything with the assumptions about the general fund, or anything else that we'd like staff to consider putting in or taking out?
It sounds like we could talk about it when we talk about parks and rec, but I would be interested in talking about the bathrooms, and it seems little, but I actually think, and I mainly, this is coming from now a number of soccer games where I hear other visitors use the facilities, and they're like, oh yeah, Carbondale has the worst bathrooms in their parks, and I think it reflects on us, you know, we want people to, these are people coming from other communities who are gonna hang out here for the day, and it kind of occurred to me as I was standing there listening to a group wait for their turn at Miners Park because there are no stalls, so it's kind of uncomfortable to go to the bathroom next to a stranger, it's like, just kind of interesting, so. I know it's been on the FMLD list, but, yeah, I think it's something we should think about for not just our, our citizens, but in, in terms of how people see us.
I had one thing, too, on parks and rec, and this is just a data point, but from an informational basis, I was listening to a conversation about, from some people who were interested in requesting some adaptive play equipment at, at our parks, so that's something that may come up again at some point, so I'm just putting it out there for future planning.
And when Erickson, and we have that discussion on parks and rec, we can talk about that, we have kind of a plan and some ideas on what locations that works and what should be switched out, and, you know, to have one piece versus, you know, an entire universal, you know, playground and the cost on that.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
And you get parks and rec on the 16th, so next Tuesday night.
Oh, okay.
Could I just clarify one more thing on fund balances, I'm sorry to be like, the fund balance...
That's okay, no, it's fine.
That's our language.
Thank you, that's why we're here.
It's more confusing than it seems, so on the very end of the fund balance stuff, so 147 of our packet, total town budget, so that fund balance beginning, 16.8 this year, 17 million next year, that's all these funds added up?
Yes.
Right, okay, 'cause it's interesting, because I generally think of our budget as in that six and a half million dollar range, but that's the general fund, and so this is with water and wastewater or the other big ones, okay.
This includes enterprise.
And then why, if somebody asked me, why does it say we're 1.9 million in the red there on revenue less expenditures for 2019 overall?
Because of what you're going to be doing in your wastewater and water fund.
So, we've saved up some of those funds, for example, you're gonna hear later tonight on the clarifier project, which we've talked about some last year, so we build up that fund and then we spend it down when we do specific projects, so.
Okay, 1.2 of that is one project.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's just, we've, we've made the revenue in years past, we've saved it up, now we're ready to spend it, so it's not really a bad thing, we're still ending with a really healthy overall fund.
Yeah, and I think one of the things in, you know, our budget, which gives you some cushion for emergencies, one, we have money in the bank, and two, our only debt is the balance on the rec center, which we've refinanced, taken it down, and it's 2024, it's, it's paid off, you know, that, that gives the town some flexibility to respond to, to things because we do have money in the bank and borrowing capacity if, if we need to. And I say this every year, but I've never worked in an organization which the utility funds don't carry significant amount of debt, and ours, ours don't, and that's been kind of a, a plan.
Great.
But that also means that you have the ability, you know, particularly if you're parks and rec and down the line, that, you know, if we're looking at after 2024 and structuring and looking at revenue streams, if there is a desire to borrow money for a major project, like a new pool or a percentage of that, that's something that you have, you can look at, where other towns might not be able to.
Thank you.
Just two quick questions, one, what is the lodging tax used for, 'cause I noticed here, speaking of ending fund balances...
Lodging tax is paid directly to the chamber.
To the chamber, okay.
And goes to the tourism council.
Okay, and on page 142, I noticed we have trail maintenance for 15, and then in number nine, we're being reimbursed 55 for Red Hill, are those two related or different?
We have lots of trails.
Okay.
Different, so Red Hill, we have, AVLT has an endowment that will bill, bill for each year, which is 12 to 14,000 for the maintenance of just the Red Hill parking lot and, which ultimately will get built depending on the final design, and the trails as they go through And they endowed roughly $200,000 towards that in their fundraising, so that's to, kind of, that was kind of our model as we take on a new obligation, that we have another funding source for it. The other thing on Red Hill is there's $150,000 worth of trail building, which it'll be slightly less than that, we hope, which will be completed by the end of this month or early November, which you'll see a budget amendment for, and that also is an AVLT pass through. We put $50,000 towards that entire Red Hill project, but we already paid that to them, and then we'll get these other pieces back, so they, they hold the money, each year we'll rebase it. Kevin, when he gets, comes forward on some of our kind of trail maintenance side, we'll, we'll talk about what we're looking at within our current trail system, because when Ben was asking, oh, we have extra money, that's another thing that we looked at trying to invest a little more in, is that we have a lot of these paved trails in town which we've deferred maintenance on, or, Kevin will go in more details, but asphalt's really tough on trails because you don't have a lot of weight on it, it just kinda, asphalt works best when you drive on it, and many of our cycles are little, we don't get a lot of, we hope, we don't get a lot of beating on the, on the pavement, and some of that stuff deteriorates, and we'll go over kinda our idea for next year, and then years out where we really are gonna need to step up that investment.
That brings up a question from mine, are we bound in any way to give 100% of lodging tax revenue to the chamber?
I will pull that contract and I'll sheet you a copy of it.
Okay, I mean, no reason why we can't, but it continues to go up, and just seems like we should make the conscious decision, do we wanna keep giving all that away, I'm not giving it away, but giving it to the chamber for their promotional purposes, or...
Let's look at that contract.
Yeah, and I think it's more in the contract, I think it's the vote to establish that tax adds some language in, and, you know, it's for that purpose specifically on marketing lodging, but we'll check to see if, if it's specific on the pass-through, too.
Not suggesting we do anything different, but I just beg the question.
Yeah, it made me think if we're 200 off, that was, seemed like a big number.
Any other questions?
No.
Before we talk to the guys with the real money.
But first, you're gonna direct Jay to publish the notice that it's available.
Right, and it's a public hearing, right, so is there anyone in the public who'd like to address this on the budget? Seeing done, I will close the public hearing and bring it back, and somebody object to us directing Jay to notify the public that the budget is available and where to find it?
Nope.
Great.
We had a motion or anything?
No, I don't think so. Thank you, Renee.
I usually follow your directions.
You know what you're supposed to do?
He just saw.
Right.
Squiggle.
Do what Renee tells you to do.
Anybody want a break?
I just got here, so.
Okay.
Come on up, I'll just keep standing up.
Should we ask for new chairs?
How would be the tiny tables and chairs this year, wasn't that in the budget?
We haven't stoked that in, but that's...
I thought that was this year, I thought we did that this year.
No, we bought the, all the new tables, is what we budgeted for.
And we bought these, all these chairs.
And we added chairs to this collection. Heather made a push for new chairs, but we didn't put it in there, but that's obviously something we can talk about on the town hall.
My legs are broken down.
I thought it was these tables to make it easier to reach this room.
I can't reach.
Russell, Renee, whether we do the floor or by...
Ask if they have some chairs they can send our way. Aspen, that's where we got our waste bins.
We can wrap them, yeah.
See, see what hand-me-downs we can get from that valley.
Where's habitat?
All right, Kevin, I'm guessing you're starting off, 'cause yours is the first memo?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, we're here tonight to talk about the public works budget included in the 2019 proposed budget, just a little high-level philosophy. I, my philosophy with public works and utilities is that if we're doing things well, it gives the public the opportunity to worry about the things that they typically worry about, and not have to spend time worrying about, can I get to work because it snowed, am I tearing my car up going down the road, is water gonna come out of my tap, will my toilet flush, so that's, we want people not to have to worry about us. Doesn't always work, sometimes there's problems, but that's the general philosophy that we shoot for. As far as the public works budget goes, you know, in the memo, I kinda split it out between the motor pool, which is our mechanic who takes care of the entire fleet, police, parks and rec, all of our vehicles, and then the streets and public works administration budgets. Didn't spend a ton of time getting down into the details of everything that you just looked at in Renee's packet, but I like to kinda give a breakdown of, kinda in general, where the money goes within that budget, like Jay said, we're a fairly labor-intensive organization, so in the motor pool, you know, we're at 40% of that budget is labor. You know, the rest of it, you can see there's broken down 30% maintenance, 20% fuel, and then some equipment and supplies, just so Mike can do his work, there is one full-time employee in that department, and the total motor pool budget's $237,000. I don't know how you guys really wanna do this, do you wanna talk about, any questions specific to the motor pool?
Well, I think, I would just say, if you have questions as we talk, as you go through your memo, speak up, if not, just keep going.
Okay, so, in general, that's the motor pool.
And, I mean, Kevin, that's one that, when we've talked about in the past, you guys have made a strategic decision to handle that in-house, and so I assume that every few years, maybe we, do we ever consider that, you know, what if we took all those vehicles to the shop, what would the total price be? Is that a calculation that we do, or is that just not even feasible, like, we need an in-house mechanic, essentially?
I think we need an in-house mechanic, particularly when we're in the middle of snow removal and the blower quits.
Yeah.
You know, we can't wait, if that's a Saturday, we can't wait till Monday for some shop to open, we need that immediate response, it's same thing with a lot of the vehicles that are used in utilities, you know, we, we have back trucks, the jetter, just all, all the equipment we need, we need to be operating when we need it to operate, and I think that would be pretty difficult and probably actually very expensive.
Okay, so, but we still use auto house mechanical support for some of the big stuff, for example, two years ago, we had a fairly decent rebuild on our maintainer or on our blade, and that was something which we had the, the supply company basically come in, the company we bought it from, and did, did the rebuild on it. Could we have made, maybe, but it wasn't an efficient use of our, of our time, and we used to actually have one and a half, 1.5 employees on the mechanic side, and that was back when we were doing a different sludge disposal at the wastewater plant and land applying all the sludge, and we had 1970's equipment, and it took a half-time employee just to keep it running. And so when that went away, and we went to the new system and bought the dump truck and switched up everything, we switched that back to, to one person. We prob, Mike's extremely efficient, workload is probably closer to a one and a half to two-person shop, and it's one of the things we talked about as part of our waste discussions, that if we were ever to do something like that, we would need a, someone just to take care of that fleet. And some of the things Mike has done, you know, when he came in, we didn't do a lot of bulk purchasing of, like, even fluids, we were still using, you know, quarts of, and, of oil, for example, and he switched everything off over to bulk purchasing, and if you, you ever wanna go down to the shop, let Kevin know, it's a pretty slick operation, it's, it's pretty dialed in now versus how it used to, used to function.
Well, I would just suggest that based on these percentages, if it wasn't done in-house, the equipment and supplies would escalate, I'm sure, as far as the percentage of revenue spent.
Well, and like Jay said, there, there are things, you know, that it's just either not feasible because it takes more than one person to do it, or it's just beyond Mike's expertise on some of the specialized equipment we have where we do send it back to where we got it, but in general, I haven't seen too many things that that guy can't get back and operational when you need him in a pinch.
It's kinda interesting to see what the high maintenance issue, items are, I mean, street sweeper's gonna be your highest maintenance item in the fleet, and could take a half-day of work weekly to, you probably have an hour of maintenance for four to hours of operation in the field, or four to eight hours of operation in the field, because it's all moving parts, brushes, so.
Right, that's fine, I didn't mean to go that deep.
Sorry, I get excited on this stuff, as does Kevin. All right, thank you.
You can answer all questions now, Ben.
Yeah.
So, moving kinda over into the streets and public works administration, that's the portion of the budget where you're gonna find snow removal, routine maintenance of the streets and the trails, a lot of the ancillary work, town arborist work is in there, downtown enhancement, benches, trash cans, all those kinds of things. Broke that down into a few more categories for you because it's really hard just to boil it down to two or three, but again, you know, you're seeing labor at about 64% of the total budget, and if you, you know, take all of these things together, including the motor pool, you're looking at about 17% of your overall general fund budget occupied by what's in the, in my memo. A few things that you'll notice in there, we did bump up the trail maintenance, like Jay alluded to earlier, took it up by about $10,000, and our intent to, with that, we talked a little bit at the last meeting, is to actually get into doing some overlays of the trail that we have, not just patching, but actual, let's get in there and do something substantial to those. I think this'll be, it, it's a good number to give us an idea of what can we accomplish and what may we wanna adjust it to in the future. Again, without going into great detail, I love working with Jay because he gets this stuff, but, you know, asphalt trails are one of the hardest things to maintain because roads get constant compaction and recompaction, particularly in the hot weather, that keep... that keeps the void content down. Trails don't get that, so they have a lot more voids than a road does, which is ways for water to get in there. Then you get into this time of year and you get freeze thaw. And they're really hard to maintain, so I, I think you can see it in different parts of town. It's probably one of the things we need to step up a little bit.
Kevin, would you say that $10,000 is really just an allowance at this point? Or do you feel like that's probably what we're going to need on an annual basis?
Without having done a, a trail paving project yet up here, my gut tells me that that, you're probably going to need more than that on an annual basis.
Okay.
We have a lot of miles of trails in this town.
I was wondering if you have in the budget, we had talked when we did that lighting tour for nightlight, or for dark skies, of getting some of our own street lights into compliance. And so I didn't know if you guys have that in the budget, or if you want to, or. So I remember there were a couple of streetlights that were, were definitely like, oh, I bet neighbors either find that annoying or they were just not working.
Yeah, we have some nineteen eighties.
Yeah.
Design, particularly in the Hendricks area and stuff, which need to be switched out.
I would support, maybe seeing numbers on those at least, or.
And we, if you, goodness, got to get to the right one. Nope, this won't work.
Page one seventy, they have $10,000.
Yes.
In full street light maintenance, and that's replacement of some of those.
Okay.
So we did increase that slightly this year.
But that's going to give us a lighter two.
I was gonna say, that's like.
Yeah, so if that's a priority of the board, you need to let us know, and we can, you know, make some, some adjustments there.
I just can't remember how many there were, or if you guys want to come back with what would make sense, or.
Why don't we take a look at, at that? And we kind of just threw a number in there, but we could dig in a little, little further and identify which ones would make sense and get some estimates to get a little better number in there.
Well, along those lines, you know, we also had that discussion almost two years ago now about just increasing lighting along bike paths and trails and sidewalks and all that throughout town. And then we invested in that for a year or two, and I just don't want that to kind of dwindle either. And we had decided that we could do, we could accomplish both goals, that we could install lights that are dark sky compliant, but make people feel safer on our network. So is there anything in here for that right now?
No.
There's not a specific project for like a next section to finish out. So that's another one that if, is a priority of the board, we need to, we need to kind of identify and tie down a little bit.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we'd have to figure out where, because we got the, that great section that you guys did in front of, whatever, between Alpine Bank and Mason Morris, Caldwell Bank, that section.
So, just to expand on that a little bit, I will be back here in a couple of weeks talking about the capital budget. And when you look at that, you will see a project in there because one of the priorities from the Bike Ped Commission was getting the section, basically by the cemetery on Village Lane, out to kind of connect to that new sidewalk that we did on there. That was one of their priorities. It's actually in the five-year.
Okay, so you've got lighting for that in the plan?
Yeah.
Okay. In this year's budget or in a future, like a long term?
Not in this year's budget, in a future year's budget.
Okay. Okay. I guess I just want to make sure that those, those priorities, that they seem, they tend to come up. But it seems like something that we should just chip away at every year, that we should budget, let's expand lighting a little bit. Let's replace some lights. Let's replace some bear trash, the trash cans that aren't bear-proof, you know? That, that way we'll, we'll accomplish all these things and.
And we, we got one of the three.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The bear trash cans are in there, and one or two lights, but we need to expand that. And Ben's got a good point that we didn't look at kind of that accelerating other spots for.
And if there's room in the budget, I mean, like for that Village Lane one, maybe there's not this year, maybe that's a future year, but that would seem like.
The only thing I would say about that is, while it, it would be nice to do a little bit each year, if you're looking at a section, like from Eighth Street around the corner to the park, you're probably looking at a similar-sized project that, than you, that you saw out on 133. So you're looking at $100,000 plus. And those projects are much more efficient because you get in there, you lay the conduit along the whole thing. So it's, it's not something you can just kind of piecemeal together.
Okay. So it sounds like you can come back when we, we talk capital and we can see what that looks like. And maybe you say, well, I think that could happen in 2020, or next year, whenever.
Yeah.
Okay. Or not, maybe next year, you know?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Given the constraints of time, we can definitely prioritize it however you guys want to prioritize it.
Okay.
So, the other thing I kind of wanted to hit on in the Streets budget is the line for tree maintenance would be on that same page, 170. Is that right? That went up this year by about $7,000. And that's just to reflect the expense of dealing with some of the larger trees that we have in town that we just do not have the equipment to take care of. So, that $25,000 budget, just so you guys kind of get a picture, is enough for removing four large trees and pruning 22 of them.
Wow.
Are you on a tree removal plan there or something, Kevin?
No, but we, we definitely end up with large elm issues every year, particularly in the downtown area. So I, it's just more of a magnitude, $25,000 for, you know, tree maintenance seems like a lot of money. But when you're talking, that really gets you four trees removed if you need to, and 22 of the larger ones that we don't have the equipment to get up and actually prune correctly compared to the number of trees in town.
Would you say there's some deferred maintenance with that, and we're playing catch-up?
To a certain degree, yes, but we are catching up well. The shift that you'll see from maybe times past to now is that tree maintenance budget is being spent on things that we can't do instead of maybe things we don't want to do.
Okay. But it sounds like you'll probably, well, actually you show a decrease in, in future years, so.
That, that's an oversight on my part of not carrying that out.
Okay. All right, so.
I would plan on that.
They're the last four trees.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, then you'd be down to three trees if you went back now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I don't know if there's anything more in particular you guys want to discuss in there?
One question, Ken, on the tree maintenance, is that removal and replacement, or just removal and stump grinding and getting rid of it, or?
Removal and stump grinding.
Okay.
So we budget elsewhere on the replacement side. So usually we end up with a replacement where we do a full removal.
Yeah, absolutely. Unless they're just so tight together, that doesn't make sense. Yeah, we don't, I mean, it's general policy of a one-for-one replacement.
Right.
And we have been making headway on switching out our elm canopy in town to other, other trees. And we've got some cottonwood issues in some of our parks too, which we'll continue to see switch out. And then we do have, at least in one town park, or right away, at least one of the big blue spruce, which is on its last legs. And we'll see how long we can keep it going. But some of those real big, beautiful blue spruce trees, when they come down, they come down. Kevin, the only question I have, were you finished, Lonnie?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. For the Meadowwood project, does it make sense to do anything else with that? Whether it be drainage or utility work, or we, we doing everything we can when we do that? Well, that's just paving, though.
So what you'll see in that project, and that'll be again in the capital project. But Mark has a little bit of work that he wants to do as far as the Ella ditch that you'll actually see in here. That would be included as part of that.
Okay.
There's also some things we talked about at the Bike Ped Trails Commission to do some minor enhancements of, like the Far East tie-in. Couple other ones, I don't remember specifically, but those are worked into there. The drainage work, for the most part on that, would be taking a look at the flow line of the curb and replacing the panels that have maybe settled over time and that. And that would all be done before we regraded the road and paved it.
Sorry, I was thinking Public Works, but we can talk about it.
Well, and, you know, that kind of plays into, we just had a meeting today with C-Dot because they're going to be replacing the signals at Village Lane and Meadowwood in 2021. But when we were out there looking at the Meadowwood signal today, I, I was coordinating with them, and I don't want to go redo a piece of road that they're going to tear up with their project three years later. So we kind of hashed out where the boundaries would be on that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else for Kevin before we go into Utilities?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Mr. O'Meara, welcome. You're up.
Boy. For the most part, the, the big changes that we're seeing for 2019 is going to be in the capital realm. We had a lot of impact from the fire, as well as drought that made us kind of reel back and rethink some things. The Clarifier project is continuing on. We've got a application in for the state. In order to move forward with the Clarifier project, we've got to get a blessing from the state with all the details and loadings and all of that. So that's, that's being addressed right now. And hopefully, the state will not have any ancillary concerns as far as what we need to take care of along with that. We're trying to be pretty comprehensive in, with this, with the Clarifier project, so.
Can you just do a quick description of what a clarifier is? Because.
Okay.
Not too descriptive, but just a quick, I said quick, I qualify. We don't need the diagram.
So, so a clarifier is, clarifier is basically just a quiescent basin in which all the wastewater sludge, called activated sludge, it all comes in combined, and it acts as a quies, a quiescent basin. And the solids settle out to the bottom. Clarifier, the clarified water goes over and gets discharged back into the river after disinfection. The solids on the bottom go back to the beginning of the plant, and they get recycled. And once a day, we waste out some of that sludge, and that goes off to the disposal.
As spoils? As spoils?
As, as bio solids.
Bio, okay.
That's, that's where the screw press and all that come in.
Okay.
So, with the Clarifier project, we're looking to do new pumps. The pumps that are running right now are no longer supported. That company got bought out by another company, and they decided to not support them anymore. So we're looking at that, and also some ancillary pumps to help us move some of the tankage around and keep, try and improve on the efficiency of the tankages that we do have. We're slowly looking at some of the loading issues that were going on all along. And it's, you know, it's, we started in 2008 and 2010 with some of these upgrades. And we've been able to maintain the plant the way it is. Well, now we're looking at the Clarifier, and probably after that, we're probably going to be looking at some of the tankage for the activated sludge process so that we can stay above the regulations. I don't know how many years out that's going to be, but I'm looking probably five years, maybe ten. Could be sooner. We've got a lot of stuff that's been in the pipeline since 2007, 2008, the Third Street Housing. We got Marketplace going, we've got Stein and some of these other developments. And all of these have kind of been on our radar all along. And they just really haven't been pushing the envelope in us for us to, to look at some of those things. And now that, with what's going on, it looks like we're going to need to keep that in forefront, make sure that we stay on top of it. So we're gonna, the maintenance and overall daily activities are going to remain the same with sewer jetting, video camming, and doing spot repairs on the sewer lines where we need them. We've got some. Money's in for looking at doing some lineup, upsizing line down on Colorado and Highway 133, which has been considered a choke point for several years. If the Stein development goes through, we'll probably be looking to do that. I think it goes to either 11th or 12th Street down Colorado Avenue from Highway 133. And then for stormwater, which comes out of the wastewater fund, we're looking to do more manhole, more dry wells and just update the maintenance and keep that all going.
That's that specific stormwater charge we have in the utility bill. Generates about $60,000 a year towards, we don't usually charge labor to that. That's more just to buy dry wells and equipment that we usually self, self-perform in most cases. Once in a while, we'll contract one out, but.
Yeah.
Most of them we build ourselves.
I was going to say, the only ones that I recall we contracted out were the ones that were on Village.
Yeah, when they were part of a bigger project.
Two or three of them there.
Yeah, when we were dealing with the highway project and a few others. But most of the time, we self-perform and put them in ourselves.
And that, that, that's been. Having the, the jet truck and the cam truck both have been utilized for the stormwater system as well as irrigation ditches and things like that. So when you see that, that big vac truck out there and the cam truck out there, we're using those for multiple inventory purposes, not just for the sewer, but also for the stormwater as well as the irrigation ditches, so. On the water side, we're looking at. Putting in a generator for the crystal well, which we found with the Lake Christine fire that we could have had a multiple plant outage had the fire taken out the power lines that everybody was thinking it could have, I don't know if everybody knew, the fire could have taken out the Upper Valley. They probably would have taken us out as well. That would have left us with one plant, and that's Nettle Creek, so.
Which we might not have been allowed to use.
The time of year was okay.
That's when you just get arrested. It's me, not you, Dan, who tried to take them away.
And, and this is something that we've, we've thought about for a couple of years now. And after doing the, the crystal well filtration system, it, it became pretty obvious that that would be a, a really good project to put, put in there. The Roaring Fork Plant, which is down here, runs off of both Excel and Holy Cross. The wells are on Holy Cross, and they pump to the treatment plant, which is on Excel. If Excel goes down, we can't run it. And if Holy Cross goes down, we can't run it either. Because both of them have to be up in order to run that plant. So that would allow us to have both Nettle Creek and the Crystal Well operational in a circumstance of a power outage. And we haven't been in that situation that I am aware of, but it's hard to not look at that when things like last summer went on.
Mark, I've never heard of anybody doing this. It's probably a long shot. But I just had the thought of, has battery storage come a long way? Given, chances are we wouldn't need it for a long period of time, you know, where you would need a generator. But I'm just curious if battery storage, you know, obviously not the maintenance with a generator, just. Just curious if that's something that would suffice. It's just a wild-ass idea, so.
I, you know, the thing that my first thought on that would be storage of the batteries and the real estate it would take to have those. And then just the equipment to keep them up and running. I don't know. I think a hydro plant would be easier to do, but that's just myself.
Okay.
And then to sustain, to have a sustained power run off of that, if it's over a four-hour period, which we see sometimes. I don't know that we would be able to get enough power out of a battery storage system to run a couple of pumps.
When you're talking, those things are three-phase, 480, not 110 outlets.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a well pump that's putting out about a million gallons a day and the service pump that's pumping into the system is doing the same. So it's some pretty significant power. And then we're also looking at doing some additional filtration capacity at Roaring Fork Plant. I don't think we'll need to do any engineering on it. I think it's just, it's basically going to be a plug-and-play type of deal. Order a skid, hire them out to put it in and just make sure that everything's running right. But that's going to be about a half million bucks. That'll give us enough extra capacity at Roaring Fork to tide us over in the event that we were to lose one of the other plants.
We'll have the engineers just review the idea.
Yeah, yeah. The plant was originally built for two million gallons. And I don't know, has anybody here been to that plant?
To the Roaring Fork?
I have.
Yeah, okay, so it's built on a modular type of scale. Each, there's two skids right now. Each skid is half a million gallons. So it's, there's room for two more skids. Everything else is all plumbed in and ready to go. The computer programming is up and it's been programmed to add two more skids. And all the electronics and everything are there. So it's always easy to say that it'll be easy to put in. It'll probably take us a solid month to get the thing installed and a lot of headaches later. But it'll be, it should slide right in. And then we'll be able to produce a million and a half out of that plant without having to add additional well capacity, which we'll have to do in the future to get the next half a million gallon a day skid in there. So we're kind of cheating the system and pushing that envelope at that plant with the available infrastructure we have. But it would tide us over in a circumstance that we ran into this year with Nettle Creek. Provided we have both Holy Cross and Excel running.
With that purchase at the half million dollars, when we bought that plant originally, we pre-purchased a lot of the maintenance on it. Is that just the skid or is that kind of the, we had like the membrane replacement pre-purchased on the other plants? Is this just the plant itself?
The skid will include the turbidometers, the membranes, the installation and everything, according to what I'm understanding right now today. There will be some outside coordination with our telemetry people and our electrician and things like that. But for the most part, this is all going to be a I can't remember the, Evoc was the main supplier and it's Siemens. It's a Siemens filtration plant. So this is all through Siemens, so everything will be matched up to what's already there. And they were, there is no more membrane escrow accounts for replacement. So that's going to have to come up, you know, we're going to have to keep that in mind when we do the replacements to time that out after 10, 15 years. But I think it's a good move on our part to at least get that in there. And that'll kind of give us some comfort during stressful times like we've had this summer.
So that was part of our long-term capital plan. And what we've done is shifted things around and accelerated it to do that aspect as opposed, originally, we were going to do the additional wells first. We're going to do this first and then focus on the well field. So if you remember SGM's presentation on the whole water system planning, we're just kind of flipping priorities based on what we have in place.
And that's all paid for out of the enterprise fund for water and wastewater, right?
Yeah.
That's impressive that it was well managed and well funded and that it can do all these improvements.
Well, and time-wise, we can make a dent in that water supply in a short period of time by adding a skid versus trying to go after the wells first, which is going to get into easements and drilling and a whole bunch of other stuff. This is something that we can move on relatively quick. I can foresee that we could probably have that additional filtration capacity by the beginning of next summer if we move on it and move on it hard.
And Ben, to your point, I mean, this is one of the reasons I think we were all aggressive with the rate increases and tap fees so that we can maintain things.
That was a big one.
And so we are continuing to look at the well issue and where to place the next set of wells. And Kevin and Mark will be working with our water engineers on looking at the right properties. We've met with one landowner already to approach them about the feasibility of expanding our well field on their property. And we'll be looking at other properties too. So we don't own the land for the wells to go into. We have permits for the wells. They were permitted back, you know, years ago when the whole system was put together. But we have some steps to acquire easements right away, pipeline easements, that type of stuff, to make that happen. So it's a little more complicated.
And we'll have to drill some test wells to make sure the water quality is acceptable to the state and that they will produce what we need to produce. And that takes a while, so.
Just one question out of curiosity. Since you're buying essentially the kit, I'll just call it, from Siemens, does it come with a service maintenance agreement at all?
We could probably approach them for a service agreement. What we've done in the past is we just have them come up for three or four days to perform service and training if we need it. And, you know, with the changes in staff, we've had them come up. I'm going to say, maybe every three years or so. If I was to average it out, since I've been here, they've come up often enough so that we can maintain some institutional knowledge on training other people on how that plant runs. There are some quirks with that plant being as technical as it is. It can get over our heads real quick. And so when that happens, technically, you know, a lot of it's computer-based programs and things like that, we just have them come up because we need it.
And those are satellite-driven then, right? The computer programs are satellite-driven or?
No, they can, it's all databases and programmable logic controllers and stuff that you never see in the background that makes everything run.
Okay, thank you.
I think next on the water side, we can talk about is a hydro plant. We're continuing to work with the Forest Service on the hydro plant and work with the consultant engineers. We've got, the grant that we did back in 2017 has expired. We were successful in obtaining a new contract for the remaining funds that we did not expend. So we'll be bringing that up probably the next meeting. Have a signature party with Dan. And we'll be able to keep moving forward on that. The Forest Service permit did not include some of the language for hydro facility. And it ended up after the feasibility study, our preferred alternative is to expand the, that we need to expand the easement from the Nettle Creek groundwater pipeline over to South Nettle Creek so we can drain the line if we need to in an emergency. That's not in the permit. So I'm trying to work with them to be expeditious on allowing for us to get an easement to do that. We've also looked at purchase of those easement properties all the way to the South Nettle Creek. And we initially had, I think, last year, maybe it was this year, $100,000. That was the value of the land, according to their estimates. And we thought that it'd be a smart thing to go ahead and approach the Forest Service to see if we can purchase that land from the treatment plant all the way up to the head gate and the North Nettle Creek intake. Now that we've got this easement going on, we'll wait for that to come back and see if there's still a game to at least negotiate and see if we can do something as far as purchase of that property. I think it'd be a win-win for us.
Mark, do you think there's any chance that that project would go under construction in 2019?
We're waiting on the Forest Service. You know, I didn't think it would take near the length of time that it took to get this permit going. And we, our hands were held until we get their blessing on what we're trying to do and they're okay with it. If the Forest Service is responsive with the easement and we can amend the permit, I can see that we can do that, that we can have it running by 2020.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Awesome.
Been knocking on wood for 11 years on this. So.
Thank you.
The more I think about it, the more, you know, it all makes sense on how we're looking at this. And we did find that there's a potential weak spot on that line. We talked about in the report, weekly report, that we found a leak on that line. And we're going to have that repaired now, next week because of the weather. But I think that'll give us an idea what the integrity of that line is in the upper portions. And we'll have an opportunity to tighten up on it and restrain it where it needs to be restrained. On the ditches, we are looking to do some restoration. Well, with the Crystal River restoration, we're looking to do some work on the Weaver ditch. We've got an RFP out that's being proposed on right now for surveying the Weaver ditch. That'll allow us to figure out what the profile of the ditch is from the head gate all the way down to the turnout onto high, into the Roaring Fork River. I think once that's done, we'll have an idea where we can put some monitoring stations and things like that and hopefully get some water efficiency measures that we can get an idea of where we can put some of these efficiency measures in.
Do you feel like you would benefit from more money next year in making that, making the ditch more efficient potentially? Or do you feel like?
I think without, I hate to be too preemptive on something like that. If, I think, you know, if we end up needing more money, we can come back to the board and say, hey, you know, this is going to be a heck of a lot more than we thought. Or, you know, what's your vote on this to go forward on these ideas and concepts or not? Does that?
I think that's true on the Weaver. I think there's a broader question of, are there other efficiency things that we need to budget for in the balance of the ditch system? Like, do we have areas which would be, you know, lining has its own challenges, but are there areas which would be logical to line versus not? And I think we're going to see some action ideas come out of that whole V-Cap planning process too, which you'll all get a report on. And so, you know, I think as a result of this year, we probably need to give some thought. And I think that might have been part of the question too, is beyond Weaver.
Yeah, and my thinking, I mean, I know your funds are limited, but we budget $30,000. I think it's $30,000 for energy projects. I'm just wondering if there's ditch projects. Maybe we focus our, or shift our focus for a year and do water efficiency projects via ditch enhancements. I don't know, but I'm just more motivated to focus on ditch water efficiency projects than I have been in the past. So I'm just trying to figure out ways to do that.
We talked about that. And one of the things with the funds that are already in this budget, one of the areas that we're going to try to tackle is basically from bridges going east on the Carbondale leg there. There's going to be a couple advantages of that. One is it's a fairly low-slope area of the ditch. So we get a lot of sedimentation in there. So it's a pretty much annual maintenance issue. So we think that by lining that, and what you'll probably see in there is some sort of like a half-pipe liner. It'll still be open, but it will be a half-pipe lined. That'll increase the velocity a little bit to help keep it cleaned out. We've also got a couple of ideas on how to put some sumps in strategic locations so that sediment actually goes into there where we can drive by with the jet truck and suck it out versus having to clean long sections of ditch. And it'll also improve the amount of water that's basically seeping out of it.
Okay.
And, you know, the things that we're thinking about right now in that section are, we will run across a few trees that are naturally used to having pretty much all the water they can drink all summer. So, you know, some of the ideas we've kicked around on that is you still do the lining, but you put some holes in it at the kind of normal water level or just below so they're not getting sediment packed into them. But some water can still leak out right by the tree. Did a very similar thing when they piped that section over by 689 the way home. We actually left gravel along the outside of those pipes instead of using typical backfill so some of that water would seep down and provide water for those spruce trees.
So is there, I mean, I guess by the direction I personally would like to give is, let us know if there are more, if there are ways for us to improve efficiency and therefore make continued progress on water efficiency. And maybe we'll decide to fund them or not, but let us know. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Well, that's something that we've been kicking around, I'm going to say for the past year, trying to, you know, do the, okay, what do you do? And, you know, the the tree surrounding the ditches presents a challenge to make sure that, you know, whatever we do is not going to knock all the trees out. And also to say, okay, you know, let's do this a little at a time and see what works the best. You know, looking at different types of pipe in different locations. And I think that, you know, the way we normally clean the ditches with a backhoe, shovels and things like that, you know, to go in there with a liner, a polybutyl liner and/or a bentonite-type liner, you're kind of defeating the purpose of lining it if you've got to go in there all the time. So there are some areas that would be good to do pipe in. Other areas, maybe leave them alone because there's so many trees on them. And so, you know, it's just a little bit of a mix and a match. And also with the sedimentation and things like that, Sopers Park could be a really good place to do like a demonstration to do a ditch lining. But do you want a piece of pipe all the way through Sopers Park on the Weaver there? I mean, those are some of the things that come to my mind. And the Weaver ditch is relatively flat. So, you know, having a smooth wall pipe might help a lot as far as keeping the annual maintenance down and the siltation. But the aesthetics of it, people may not like.
Yeah, agreed.
We hear what you're saying and we hear that it's a priority and we'll definitely be back to you. But I do in general agree with Mark's philosophy of, you know, some of the stuff we're trying is kind of combination between typical stormwater management, ditches and actually sewer management at the same time. So I think we want to dial these in before we go hog wild and go, hmm, I wish that would have worked. have worked.
Well, and we've done enough on the ditches. We've got a pretty good idea of some of the different tools and applications for some of that. You know, we've pumped a lot of money into the ditches. If you look at the budget over the years and the expenditures that we've done over the ditches, it's a chunk of change. And, you know, we're finding that there's less calls on the ditches for the most part. And they seem to be operating better. You know, we still have some water conservation stuff to be doing and, you know, we've got all the flumes and things like that calibrated in. And, you know, this whole automated ditch system has continually been out there. And I think that we're almost at a point where we can say, okay, we know it'll work based on the information that we're gathering this year and next year. Let's put it to the test and see if we can do it. And that might, that might save as much, as much water as some of the lining.
Okay.
Provided it works. Thinking outside the box.
I just had one more general utility, if you were finished.
Go ahead.
On page 182, on our 182, this is the water funds spreadsheet, I saw that the utilities jumped from 60 grand, oh, excuse me. Oh, I guess, I guess, I guess maybe it hasn't gone up that much. It looked like in 2017, we spent almost 70,000 on utilities, line item 41, 43, 36, 34, 10. And this year, it's looking like actual or estimated is going to be 75 grand. Was there something that, like, did we, did we lose efficiency on something or?
We've got the Crystal well that came online and also the Roaring Fork wells. We've been running those more. And I still need to get back with the solar applications on that. Erica, I don't know if you've got any line of sight on that or not. I have not talked to Matt.
Right. They have not, these are the microgrid?
No, these would be the PPA that we have down on.
For the Roaring Fork Treatment Plant?
Right.
Also, they might've been offline?
No, no, I think.
Offline, I think it's more of a bookkeeping issue.
Yeah, on some of their billing stuff that we need to catch up on with them. Is that Woody's?
We're getting better.
Yeah, on their consistency on billing. But no matter what, that's a PPA, so we're buying the power from them no matter what, just at a different rate. And we ran those, ran Roaring Fork at an all-time high for water production this year. So we're waiting to see how that balances out. When we designed the solar system there, it was based on the historic usage. And so to see how it balances out this year where we used it way more, we're waiting to see. But I think in general, you saw us pumping a lot more water both out of the ground and through treatment plants and not just gravity feeding off Nettle Creek this year than in past years. So I don't think any change on efficiencies at all. It's all more juice. And that's the, you know, that's one of the things we need to continue to look on our offsets.
You can see it on the, like, live data. I was just looking at it earlier. And yeah, you can see Roaring Fork plant is, was running way more than normal and only being offset by about 30% solar, where before it was in the 60 to 80% range, so.
During the summer and then.
During the summer.
We gain the rest of the year, so how that balance?
Yeah.
Yeah. And if we added a pump station to feed Prince Creek, would that only be, I mean, we would, that would allow us to take Nettle Creek offline, so we would be increasing our pumping costs however often we wanted to do that? Is that correct?
I'll get super excited about this when I say this, but one of the options that we're looking at, if you recall the hydro feasibility study, there was a pump as turbine option in there. So what we're, one of the options we're going to look at for that line is, is there a way that we could put in pumps as turbines instead of the PRVs that are there now that could be generating electricity as they dissipate the energy that we need them to for, you know, almost every day? And then could those then be flipped to pumps if we needed to just by reversing that process?
And they'd be downstream of all those taps?
There'd basically be three of them, just like we have the PRVs.
So if you go up above the Seven Elks Road, there's a road that follows the old Crystal River Railroad bed. There's a PRV up there. There's another PRV at Thomas Road where the bridge is. There's another PRV over by the Baptist Church. So we've got three different stations. And that was one of the first hydro applications. For some reason, back in the day, I was stuck on using the PRVs instead of the raw water line. And back then, I think that I came up with a price of $75,000 per station to install a hydro application in unison with the PRV. So that kind of gives you a bird's eye, you know, that was 10 years ago, so.
It's too late, Kevin.
Hundred dollar.
Well, I'm already excited.
Trying to manage the expectations of.
One of the downfalls of those pumps as turbines is they're not as efficient and you're probably not going to get 100% payback over their life cycle. But if you look at that compared to the cost of just installing pumps that may or may not ever run, I think it might be more beneficial and you're still generating some power from that. What we need is a loss of energy.
Yeah. Okay, cool. This might be boring the rest of the board so we can move on.
Not at all.
You know, the one thing I was going to add real quick, and it's not specific to anything, but it goes back to Ben, I think your question about the 1.9 million. So if you do look at the clarifier and the pumps on the Nettle Creek line and that skid down there, that's all but $50,000 just in those three items of that 1.9 million.
Thank you.
That's between two different funds, but it's expensive stuff.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on utilities? Mark, were you finished? Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Kevin.
Yep.
Yep.
All right. We should be able to pound through the last item real quick. Or adjourn?
We still move.
Item number 10, the IT contracts.
Yeah, Renee can fill in any of the things I missed, but Trailhead Technologies has been our kind of contract IT provider for a long time. They've been through a couple of different contract revisions with the town. They basically have the keys to everything in town as it comes to our technology systems. We were notified this summer that they were going to dissolve their company, the two principals, and go work for other entities. And that's in process. We went out as an RFP that Renee and I put together with the help of the balance of staff and Trailhead to try to get some sort of bid and identify potential providers of IT services for town. We looked early on and said, we're not at the point where we need an in-house IT person size-wise and scope of what we're doing. Plus, we have a range of items that a single person would be working on. So having that expertise from the server network to PC support to email exchange, all the different things we do, we thought would be, we would be tough. So what we did is we wrapped it all up in an RFP, put it out, and we had five responses. And as usual, when you put an RFP out, then you had calls from 10 other companies the day after the deadline was done saying, oh, by the way, if you don't find someone, we're interested in bidding on this. Four from the Valley and one from Denver. We had two quotes or proposals, which were dynamite quotes, but were above our, the price point that we thought we were shooting for. We knew what we were spending now. We knew kind of what we thought we had to upgrade to get there. So we're in that 25 to $30,000 range now for the, currently for the support we're receiving. And there were some gaps there that we wanted to upgrade. And we're shooting for a 40 to 50, 45 to $50,000 level of support. We had two great proposals, one in Denver, one from a local company, which were 70-plus. And we said, you know, great response. We, it's outside our range. So we interviewed three companies, all of them local, one from Glenwood, two from Carbondale. We put together a group of folks from the town as the interview committee, not like the department heads, but the person who's actually interfacing with the IT folks on a regular basis. The ones who were calling like, hey, I need a new email account, the person, the front person dealing with troubleshooting and issues within their departments. We went through three interviews, spent a bunch of time, did a bunch of background checking. And we're proposing to move forward with Mitchell and Company, which is a local company. What was really attractive with them is that they have some municipal clients, slightly bigger than us, but which run a lot of the same software platforms we use. So there's a level of familiarity with our financial systems, with our PD record systems and that type of thing. So, and their support on those systems seemed to be real well, go real well. The issue, which is going to be a change for our organization and it's going to take an adaption from our staff, is that we're used to being able to call and just have a fireman show up and fix your unit, you know, hey. But sometimes that could be six hours, eight hours. This moves to a 24/7 help center. So there's software put on each computer, which remote person will sit and talk you through troubleshooting your unit. At first, we had some pushback on that. We talked to some other organizations which put it in place, in particular Snowmass Village. And the comment back was, it's the best thing we've ever done. We get quicker service, things get fixed, and employees take ownership of their, their unit, which sometimes doesn't happen. So we're going to, that's what we're proposing. That's a little different from the RFP. We didn't say, hey, we want a help desk. We said, we want this kind of support. So the contract references a help desk and we're, is built into that, that number there as part of the contract. So we took our standard professional services contract, rolled in the IT side of it and came up with the contract you have in front of you. We run, as I said, a bunch of different systems. I mean, REC is standalone on some of their systems. Utilities uses IT support for certain things. The controllers on the water treatment plants and the wastewater plant go through a separate company, which just does that type of work. So that's a, that's a little different interface on the utility side. Police Department, we run a records system, which is through the dispatch center, through the county. So all the county entities, law enforcement entities are in the same system, which is really nice. But we need to be able to support that on our end of it. So you feel Mitchell can do that. But then there's a whole nother level of security clearance. So not only does our IT company have all our confidential employee records, financial, everything, plus the public information, but they have the keys to the crime computer, basically. So there's actually a full FBI check and background check for the person who gets that support. So when we execute this contract, there's a few more steps which come together before they're actually going to be doing our support. We also sat down with Trailhead on our three finalists and talked about where we'd have the smoothest transition as part of it too, because we've got one company with the keys to the town, which needs to pass them off, and we need to kind of set that up as a smooth transition, which will be over three to four weeks, not overnight. So that's where we're at. We hope it all works, but it's, you kind of have a security when you've been using, a sense of security when you've been using the same company for 10, 12, 15 years. So it's going to be a big change.
I'm glad your Trailhead's working so productively on the transition, that they're not just saying, hey, we're done, that's your problem. Like, that's just really great to hear and speaks well of them.
Kevin's in another position now, but he's been still supporting our stuff on the side. So I think he's wanting us to move forward for this transition because he's still on call on the weekends and stuff. And we're kind of a 24/7 organization. That's why the help desk is nice. But, you know, a records computer goes down when a policeman's, woman's doing their report at 3:00 in the morning, you've got to get it back up.
Yeah. It's great there were local companies and quality local companies in the running too. That's great.
You know, and what we did was, we didn't go out and just average, this RFP was pretty strategic where we put it out. It got picked up on some broader, broader systems, but we really tried to target folks in the Valley and companies that we knew which were, would be interested. And then we sent it to all chamber members, which had IT companies too. So little different, it was all posted on our website, but a little strategic on where we sent it out. We weren't really wanting some company from, you know, back east trying to support our systems here.
Well, I'm glad to hear that they've upgraded their service level to include the remote help desk, because one of the things about Mitchell Company that I've heard from businesses and so forth was that their response time was pretty slow. And obviously, you can't sustain a support system that's going to have a lag in their support. So I'm glad to hear that they've improved upon that and that you feel confident in their ability to deliver what you need.
You know, part of our, we've had similar, you know, feedback. And part of our comfort factor was the support to the other municipalities, which were using the same systems, you know, not the individual PC support and stuff from the help center, but, you know, the response they were getting on keeping the major systems running. And one of our biggest challenges, and it's kind of where Mitchell seemed to have a strength, is we've got our system, we've got the soft, contract software company, and then there's often a third-party vendor as part of it. So you've got like the credit card processor, you've got, you know, basically three different entities at work. And when you get them all together, they all just point fingers at each other whose, whose system is done. And there seem to be a level of expertise of how to navigate that. So our staff right now doesn't have to stay on hold for half a day trying to get through three different vending systems. We've had some real frustrations and time sucks on that side, more so than systems being down. But we'll, we'll see. I mean, that's one that if we don't get the right level of service, we'll, we'll be sure to address. And we made that clear in the, in the interview process.
Good, thank you.
And how long is this contract for?
It renews annually up to five years.
Up to five, got it. All right. Can I make a motion?
You may.
Move to approve the agreement for professional services with Mitchell and Company for the town's IT services. Second.
Motion by Ben, seconded by Luis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, say no.
Motion passes.
It's the quickest approval to signature I've ever done.
She just signed it right there.
All right. Jay, anything else on minutes or any questions on minutes?
No, just a, not minutes, but a quick reminder that on the 15th, the ditches turn off. The water restrictions will be lifted at that time. We'll be putting out some press releases. The county lifted fire restrictions, so we'll be following within the next 24 to 48 hours to do that. On the water side, we still want, we're still in the middle of a big drought. It's just we've had some moisture. The reason why we're lifting the water restrictions, not because it's raining out, but because we're outside the irrigation season. It's when our ditch is shut down. That's the real reason. And then tomorrow, leaf day starts across the street, so kind of a busy time on a bunch of things.
What's on our agenda for work session next week, just generally?
Parks and Rec.
It's all budget.
It's all budget.
We're going to kill you with numbers and talking about vehicles and stuff.
All right.
I'll be out of town Friday through Monday, possibly Tuesday, but my plan is to come back Monday, so just, and we'll be out of cell service, so.
All right.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Going, honey?
I am.
Is the train running? Is the train running?